Okay, good evening, council members and good evening Altadenaans. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's Altadena Town Council meeting for June 18, 2019. The meeting is hereby called to order. The time now is 7:04. The pledge of allegiance for tonight will be by one of our own. And I would like to ask Councilmember Sutherland to introduce the person who will be leading us in tonight's pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. The Executive Committee asked Justin Robertson to lead the pledge tonight since he's going to be leaving the council in another month. He's been my partner in Census Track 4611 for the past few years, and I'm really going to miss him there, especially since we seem to have several land use items that are coming up pretty soon, yes. He's also one of the council members that actually has a full-time job in addition to meeting all of his duties as a council member. And I think that this ability to juggle everything that he has to do is going to come, be very helpful after he leaves the council since they're, he and Gabby are awaiting the pitter-patter of little feet. Well, actually, they won't pitter-patter for another few months probably, but pretty soon they will, and then, good luck. At any rate, if you'd please leave the pledge for us, Justin.
Sure. Everybody please stand. Uh-oh, where is that? Flag is right here, folks. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Robertson. Okay, roll call, item number 1.2. That'll be Councilmember Veronica Jones.
Good evening. Councilmembers, please answer after you hear your name. Antonio Bersera.
Present.
Okuri Izimi.
Present.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Jennifer Lee.
Present.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Diane Marcusson.
Here.
Jeff Simmons.
Here.
Justin Robertson.
Here.
Gloria Sanica.
Present.
Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Present.
Erin Cheetah.
Present.
Dr. Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Sylvia Vega.
Excused.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Item number 1.3, that would be to approve today's, or tonight's, agenda. Councilmember Sutherland.
The Executive Committee met on June the 11th and approved the agenda as presented. There are copies, by the way, in front of the piano, I think, or on the piano, if you didn't pick one up on the way in. Are there any requests for changes or additions? In that case, I propose to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to accept the agenda, and it's properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay, that's the agenda for tonight. The item number 2.1, and that is the chairman's remarks. First of all, I'd like to thank the community for coming out tonight. I will also like to state that it takes the community, it takes the volunteerism for things to really move in our community. When you participate, that shows that you are interested in how and what happens in your community. So I would like to continue to encourage each and every one to be very active. I would also like to mention that the past two weeks, couple of weeks or so, it's been very dark for Altadenaans. And I know it was back in 2016 that we had the four-year-old that was mothered right here in our town. And unfortunately, we've also suffered another loss. Only 19 years old. Think about it. They haven't even started their life. It could be anybody. It could be a child, a brother. Just think about it. I know our law enforcement has been doing all they can to keep us safe. It really burdens my heart when violent acts and crime occurs right here in Altadena. We are a sleepy, sleepy town, a sleepy town, as they call us, tucked in the hills. It's been pretty safe. So as it is heavy on my heart, I would like to offer a moment of silence to respect someone that was violently taken away from us. May he so rest in peace. Okay, I know that it looks like a light schedule tonight, so I will conclude the chair's report and remarks on that note. Item number 2.2, the vice chair's report, Councilmember Sutherland.
And this will be very brief tonight. As indicated on the agenda at tonight's meeting, there's going to be public comment after the Altadena community reports. If you wish to speak, please fill out a comment card, which is on the piano, and hand it in to one of the council members on either end of the table here. And if, when you're called, please come to the podium and make your comments. We don't respond to comments at the meeting, but if you would like to have a response, be sure that your comment card indicates how we can get ahold of you, so we'll have your council member contact you to respond, if that's what you so wish. And that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 2.3, and that will be the recorded secretary's report, and that'll be Councilmember Jones once again.
Good evening again. The minutes of May 21, 2019, were emailed to all council members with a request for any additions or corrections. All corrections and additions that were received have been put into the minutes, and the minutes are in final form. So I make a motion that the minutes of May 21, 2019, be approved in final form and placed on the town council webpage.
Second.
Okay, the motion for the minutes to be approved and properly double-seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, one abstention. Item number 2.4, treasurer's report, Councilmember Lee.
The Altadena Town Council account is in good standing at $2,406.98. This is the time in the meeting where I pass around the can because we are a volunteer organization, and I'm passing it to the right. It goes through the audience and then hopefully comes back this way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Correspondent secretary's report, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. This is the lovely month of June, it's summer, and this will be a great opportunity, thinking about as we go into our next cycle of council life, moving forward again with website design and thinking about community communications. I think this would be a great time, so if anybody would like to get involved in our community, please reach out. And of course, we'll have further conversations within our council. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. Public safety. Let's bring in CHP Officer Nutton.
First of all, Happy Father's Day, or belated Father's Day to all you dads out there. So the collisions for this past month are actually very comparable to last month. Last month, there was 26, and the total for this month was 28. A lot of those were hit-and-runs with parked vehicles. Good news is, the DUIs dropped from last month. Last month, there was a total of six, and this month, there was only two, and those were actually out of collisions, non-injury, again, either solo vehicle or into a parked vehicle. And it looks like Woodbury Road is actually, has the most accidents from last month. Just a reminder, always wear your seatbelt, so that means if you see someone in a police car and you put your seatbelt on, that doesn't mean you're going to get out of ticket, so make sure you just have it on before you go. I've seen that a lot lately. And then also, just a reminder, car seats, I've seen a lot of installations that need to be a little bit better. We do offer car seat installations at the office. All you need to do is call the office number and get an appointment, and then a car seat technician will help install the car seats. And also, for the radar trailer on New York, this cloudy weather is killing the trailer, so I promise it'll start working once the sun actually stays out because it's solar-generated. So I will keep checking on that as well.
Hi, I think they're going to start that next section of New York the end of this coming week, this next week.
Okay.
So once they start construction, you won't need to have it there.
Okay. Because I know it's been closed from Allen, pretty much east.
That's getting ready to open next week.
Okay, then there's, okay.
Yeah, maybe you want to find a place to move it down.
Move it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we didn't know that.
Thanks very much.
Councilmember Knapp.
Is there a particular stretch of Woodbury that's problematic?
From the stats I had, the really only big one was the intersection of Woodbury and Lake. That's the only thing. Other than that, it's just a lot of little side streets. But out of the 28 collisions this past month, six of them were on Woodbury. Two of those were hit-and-runs, and then only one of them was a minor injury with complaint of pain.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Officer Nutton. Oh, okay.
I guess I, can I get a, do you have a card that I could contact you?
I don't have any cards with me. I can write my email down or s-
Okay, or I'll call the station or something and ask for you. The, I'd like to sort of talk about that Woodbury and Lake thing because if we need to change the lights, or, isn't that the jigga-jog at the, at the church? So if we need to, if we're having problems there and we need to talk to county about maybe changing the way the lights change to avoid that, but I need to understand what the problems were. So I'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
3.2, Altadena Sheriff's Station, Lieutenant Conchola.
Good evening, Chairman Nizamian, city council members. As promised, I would make every effort possible to introduce every deputy that works at Altadena Station. And tonight, I'd like to introduce Deputy, Senior Deputy Abdul Fatah. Deputy Fatah's been with Altadena Sheriff's Station for 14 years, and he's worked in many capacities in patrol, and currently, he's our watch deputy, our early morning watch deputy. So, while most of us are asleep, he's the one that's helping myself and our other supervisors out through the night properly run our station. So he's, he's also out in the field a couple of nights a week and providing significant leadership to our newer assigned deputies and support to our supervisor. So again, this is Deputy Abdul Fatah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
For your hard work.
Okay, so before I get into, as mentioned, the sad and unfortunate, actually, two sad and unfortunate violent incidences, I do want to say that we had shown a number of less crimes than we did last month. Still, the robberies and the assaults are the ones that are still pushing our crime rate up, but there's some positives behind that. We haven't had this past to report any catalytic converters that had been stolen, which, again, we were having such a rash in the past. We're hoping that continues. Fewer vehicle thefts as well. So again, there's some positives out there that we can really weigh in on, and I can take any positives I can get, especially all of us, our whole community. But the first incident, it's attempted murder, which occurred on May 29, a little short of 8:00 PM. And that occurred in the 2200 block of Altadena Drive at the trailhead turnout there at Midriff. What had occurred is, it was a stabbing, and most of you already know that from the postings that we had. And there were two individuals on a, on the trail, and one attacked the other. At this point, the motive is unknown, and a struggle ensued, and one of the two was severely injured, but with stab wounds. There were some postings on social media, which I'll tell you, social, our social media outlets provides us some quick information. Many, many times, it's inaccurate information, and we are, that's what concerns us most because in the initial reports, it was reported that a homeless person was one of the two that were involved. I will tell you that that information, which we're not quite sure where it came from, the source of that information was completely false. I will tell you, without providing too much information to compromise investigation, and by the way, if I haven't said, and you're not, you're unaware, the suspect was taken into custody immediately after the assault was reported to us, and our deputies arrived unseen. But both individuals were of the same race, they were in similar age, and they were both gainfully employed, homes, vehicles. There's no information at this point that any type of adverse conversation or contact, whether it be verbal or physical, occurred prior to the attack. That, that investigation is, it's still under investigation. Suspect was charged with attempted murder and is awaiting the court proceedings. So we did have that violent assault, but we do have the suspect in custody. The second, and again, the most serious of these two, is when someone expires, and that is on last week, on June 10, about a little bit before 5:00 PM, our dispatch received calls of a gunshot victim on, at the, let's see, the 20, excuse me.
2100.
2100 block, 2100 block of Santa Anita between Woodbury and Sacramento. Our deputies responded, arrived, found two individuals that had been suffering from gunshot wounds. Both were immediately rushed to the hospital, and one of the two expired. Both were teenagers, one was an adult, and one was under 18. What I can say at this point, and again, there were some speculation, there were some other rumors within the community about who was involved and the motive, which was always kind of interesting to us in law enforcement because majority of the time, not all the time, but a majority of the time, it's inaccurate information. I say not all the time because there's some information where people see what, they're witness these, these crimes, and they know, yet they don't come forward. But in this case, the only thing I can say as of last night, the suspect in that crime was taken into custody. It's being investigated by our homicide bureau, our headquarters homicide, and homicide, their detectives are hoping to provide a public statement by Thursday. But that's all I can tell you. The only thing, other thing I can tell you is our, our station detectives were involved, and majority of our detectives were out till the wee hours of this morning. And so we're thankful that the suspect was apprehended in such a, in my experience, a very, very short period of time, with not being arrested at the scene and not having, having very little information to follow up on, we were able to identify someone and actually, they're in custody at this point. So we don't have any information, we just believe that there are any threat, immediate threat or imminent threat to the community as a result of this, of this incident. So happy to report that. We, we are looking, to kind of switch gears a little bit, aside from the law enforcement, criminal activity that we try to suppress and apprehend our suspects, we also are very concerned about, and working with our fire department, forestry, regional planning, public works partners, in ensuring that our trails are, are safe, not only from theft, but in, in this case, any other violent attacks. There's no information, we just believe that the trails are unsafe, that there is anything that we need to provide, any information we need to provide to you that we think is immediate threat. But we are also looking, in addition to the physical threats, but the threats of fire, which is also physical, but we're looking at any other fire hazards and working together to take action to minimize any possibilities of, with the, with not only the summer months coming up, but the Fourth of July as well coming up. So we'll be reporting certain actions that we're going to be working with our partners to ensure that there's additional safety within the community, because I know that has always been a big concern within the Altadena community. For, at this point, again, we'll see that unfortunately, we did have to, we did have to experience a death, and any death is, is very unfortunate and sad. But as I've reported in the past about our two main categories of crimes, which is assaults and thefts that are spiking our overall crime rate, it's still the relationship based of the majority of our assaults that haven't resulted in significant injury or death, that there's a relationship base. I'm not making any reference to the murder, but I'm just saying in general, with the other assaults that we have had, the majority of them are still some type of relationship, knowledge of, of one or the other people, whether victim, suspect, relationship. So I can't stress enough, within your communities, within your groups, within your influence, Jill's still, it's, we're never too, I won't use the O-word, I'll just say mature. We're never too mature to still practice good values, good value systems, and ensuring that we respect others. Any questions?
Any questions from, okay, Councilmember Knapp.
First, I want to express condolences on behalf of myself and all of the town council members on the passing of Deputy Solano. Second, I wanted to know if the decedent in the June 10 drive-by was a resident of Altadena.
I can't, I can't provide any additional information at this point?
Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
And third, update on the assistant captain.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was, that was the big note. Officially, unofficially, because I'm still waiting for something to be published through the department, but I can, I can confidently say that we have, our department has selected a new captain, and her name is Marjorie Jacobs. She officially will begin at our station on this Sunday, but physically, probably she'll be there Monday morning to take command of Altadena Station.
Any more questions?
And I can provide some additional information, background, but I would probably, I think it would be best for her to come and provide you a complete introduction and, you're welcome.
Councilmember Marcusson.
That's over here. I, I just wanted to real quickly sort of state or, or understand, Pasadena PD is doing the investigation for the stabbing, is that correct? Because it happened in Pasadena?
That is, no, it's not correct. Now, in that particular area, there's a couple of different jurisdictions. Well, there's, there's US Forestry.
Right.
There's City of Pasadena, and there's Altadena sheriffs. The only other, I won't, I hate saying other jurisdiction, but it's our other Parks Bureau sheriffs, but we're one and the same in the way of law enforcement, so, but they might be responsible for the investigation if we want to get technicals. But in this case, it was right on the dividing line, and our deputies were there immediately. The, the victim collapsed in Altadena.
In Altadena, right.
We were there, we were treating.
Okay.
And at that point, the on-scene supervisor was not going to debate whose jurisdiction it was. It was close enough to where it was the greater need to provide emergency services to the victim and maintain a thorough and sound investigation without passing information on and losing anything in the prosecution process. Our supervisor took the initiative to just-
So you guys are-
Yes.
You're going to be doing the investigation.
Yes, we are. We are.
I think it actually happened in Pas-, or started in Pasadena, so.
That's what, that's what the reports were in the morning or that night.
Well, if you look at the map, if they were in the canyon, that's Pasadena, so.
Right.
Yeah. But, but you caught the guy in Altadena, right? So.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Lieutenant Conchola? Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
3.3, that would be the county fire. That would be Chief Mekki.
Okay, good evening, Chairman, council members. I'd like to provide you with the monthly activity report for LA County Fire Department. We had, for the month of May, we had a total of 345 responses. We had three fires, 291 medical calls, 11 service calls, and 37 good intent calls. Out of the 345 responses, 291 were medical calls. The majority of those were persons sick. And the next majority was major injuries. Out of those 300, out of those 291 responses, 231 of them were transported to the local hospital. 83 were transported by paramedics, and 148 of them were transported by EMT ambulance. So the, the three fires we had were relatively small, I would say, two trash fires and one cooking fire. So guess we don't need to talk about the cause of the cooking fire, right? The hazardous conditions calls, we had two of those, and we had a total of 11 traffic collisions. And like the CHP mentioned earlier, we do have a few of those on Woodbury, throughout Woodbury, Lincoln, Lake, Fair Oaks. That is in the report. Any questions?
Any question? Okay, Councilmember Jones.
I just have a question. If I call in and I'm having a heart attack, the fire department shows up along with the paramedics?
Yes, so we are your paramedics.
Okay.
So your station 11, they have a paramedic unit and a, station, station 11, did I say 12?
No, you said-
Station 12 doesn't have one?
No, no, I'll get to station 12 in one second, so, but paramedics for the city of Altadena, we have station 11, which is right next door. So they have a total of five firefighters there, one fire engine, and a paramedic unit. So the paramedic unit take care, takes care of both districts. So at station 12, we just have four firefighters there, and they're EMT. So keep in mind, a lot of our, our firefighters that promote through the ranks, a lot of them still hold their paramedic license, so they can still provide the same type of care, they just don't have the, the controlled drugs that we have on the paramedic squad. I'm kind of getting in the weeds, but just trying to give you a better description of what, what, what resources are in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Knapp.
I have a question. I have a question regarding the fire marshals that are assigned to film shoots. So I understand in some cases that those are retired fire engineers or what have you, but that they fall under the auspices of the fire department. Who do the fire marshals that are on our shoots in Altadena report up to? So if there's an issue with the behavior of one of them, who does the resident bubble that information up to?
You can give me that information and I'll get to the bottom of it.
Okay.
Okay, you want to leave that with me later at the end or?
No, that's okay, I'll email, can I email you?
Absolutely.
Or I can, if you don't stay till the end, you don't have to stay till the end.
Okay.
But I'll get you, thank you.
Okay, no further questions and thank you for coming out.
Okay, I'd just like to add one more thing is that LA County Fire Department is hiring right now, so it's a great opportunity if you have any children of at least 18 years of age or relatives or cousins or whoever to apply for a fabulous career with the fire service. So all the information is on the front of the website, I'm sorry, not the website, but in the front of the fire station, fire.lacounty.gov/BeAFirefighter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. 3.4 item number CERT, that will be Ms. Abastad.
A few of Altadena CERT members with the help of a letter from Deputy Dan Page attended the Office of the Governor's California for All, CERT and Listos Preparedness Conference at the end of May in San Diego. So they want to change our logo. This is it, California for all. In case you never noticed, there was four in the middle of California. Listos, for those of you who are not aware, is a grassroots disaster preparedness program that can be tailored to meet the individual needs of Spanish-speaking families and communities. The program is delivered in a format that is both culturally and linguistically appropriate for the target populations. I've been working with Listos in their partnership with the Red Cross, but I'm now seeking to work with them in our Altadena CERT team. So if you were to know of any Listos members in Altadena, please contact me and I'll contact them. The information at the conference was invaluable. Governor Newsom has set aside $50 million for all preparedness volunteers in the state to communicate and work with each other. Yes, that's 5-0 million. 13 million has been allocated to certain Listos programs. Here in Altadena, we hope to unite the LASD CERT team, San Gabriel Valley Red Cross, AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps volunteers, Listos, Altadena Map Your Neighborhood, and Alert to better work with the LASD, the LA County Fire, OES, Homeland Security FEMA, and the California Office of Access and Functional Needs. Now, this is a new, I just want to mention, I did not know it was called AFN. It's kind of a new office for those of us who are other than other, other, enabled, anyway. AFN, California Office of Access and Functional Needs. MYN has already attained a small grant from the program to buy shingles for our neighborhood groups. California's Great Shakeout will be October 17th. Several Altadena events, including Altadena MYN, will be scheduled the week surrounding October 17th. A lot of people prefer to do it the weekend before or the weekend after, so I'm waiting for the events to get clear, but that's what's happening. Our recent CERT meetings have, we have discussed and trained Stop the Bleed Program about the application of tourniquets, heat emergencies, and we also had a special guest who was Jennifer Dutton, who is the Disaster Program Specialist, T2 Disaster Cycle Services, it goes on and on, her title, who spoke with us about the interface between CERT and Red Cross volunteers. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Special presentations, 4.1, that will be Lincoln Avenue Development Update and Ms. Jenkins.
Good evening, members of the council. Kiri Jenkins with the rebranded Los Angeles County Development Authority, formerly the Community Development Commission. I'm happy here to be here this evening to update you, provide a brief update on the proposed redevelopment of a series of single, not single family, but vacant lots, some of which are single family lots, along Lincoln Avenue in West Altadena. Just to bring you up to speed, we've issued an RFSQ, a Request for Statements of Qualification. We received responses, we are going over those responses, and our intent is to take the top one or two candidates from that process and allow them to respond to a formal RFP. Before we issue the RFP, it's our intent to have a community engagement meeting in the very near future where we will invite members of the community to come in and speak about some of the issues they have along Lincoln, some of the requests that they might have, some of the interests that they may see in further redevelopment opportunities, such that we can take that information, synthesize it, and put that into the RFP document to better inform the developer for some of the thoughts, wishes, needs of the local community. Hopefully, within the responses that we receive, there'll be some ability to address some of those thoughts, wishes, and concerns. I have with me tonight a flyer for an upcoming, for the upcoming event, the community engagement event, and I'll read it and then pass it out. Community outreach event, development, West Altadena Scattered Sites, presented by the LA County Development Authority. It'll be Saturday, July 13th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12 p.m. It'll be at our BTC, our Business Technology Center, located at 2400 Lincoln Avenue. And the key to this is we want to have a pretty strong engagement process, so those that attend will be asked to provide input, participate in the discussion. So we're going to have a fairly small group. It may be no bigger than, say, 30 to 40 people. That's a function of it being the size limitation of the room, plus the way that we intend to engage the neighbors and the community members. So we would like for you to, if you are interested, members of the public, if you are interested, please RSVP. There's a website where you can do so. And I will now pass this out, and I look forward to seeing many of you there that day. Please let folks know in the community that the event will occur. I'll pass this out to members of the audience. Light refreshments will be served, so.
Questions, question from Councilmember Marcus and.
It is my thought that you will get many more than 30 RSVPs. So are you going to do it on a first come, first served and then tell people that you're full?
Basically, yes. There'll be first come, first served until the RSVP list has been filled out. Again, it's a twofold issue. The location, we wanted to be close to the site where the development is occurring, right on Lincoln, that's our BTC, Business Technology Center. The engagement, we wanted to have it to be two-way instead of just one-way where someone's speaking about opportunities, that's kind of boring. We wanted community engagement. We wanted it to be a fairly fast event where input is given, information is received, and we are, again, constrained just by the physical nature of the room. It's probably from that wall to where I am, all the way to that wall. It's one of the larger meeting rooms in that building, but it is still small and probably holds at most 40 to 42 people.
So is there a way that people can send you an email or whatever if they're not, you know, if I had to tell you, I'd say there were 100 people that wanted to come to your meeting, so can the other 70 send you an email with their own thoughts or something?
Be more than happy to receive that information, and that could even be, depending on what the thoughts are and the information, we could add that to the RFP document and let the developers know that there was additional interest from the community.
Don't you think that we need to be able to provide a way for others, people in the community, to provide feedback if they want to? I mean, whether it goes anywhere or not, that's, I just feel like it, there'll be people that want to give you input. So like I said, if there's a way that you can just gather emails and, yeah, add them into the.
It will hold up. I had almost 80 people in there.
Wow.
So I had, I mean.
Is the fire department here?
No, they left. They left.
I don't know that we want.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know it's going to be a different arrangement than just seating, so.
Yeah, maybe you'll have tables or something.
There'll be a series of clusters.
And we don't need to spend a lot of time on it. I just would, I think it would help us if we had a way for people to send you.
And I think people reach out to me also since I am in on the planning.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, so they can reach out to me also. I mean, I've been there from day one, so I know, so.
You want to, yeah, however you want to get that, it's not my sense of track, I don't want to jump in.
Right, and we can see what happens, we'll see. I mean, sometimes you get 100, sometimes you get 30.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I have a question, is this development taking place like between Woodbury and Altadena Drive or what is, the Lincoln Strip, what is that?
I would say roughly, if you think about it, Woodbury up to the BTC itself, 2400 block from Woodbury up to the 2400 block.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just below Figueroa, thank you.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and it's a series of seven properties, seven parcels, four, oops, four batches of properties up and down the street, consisting of a little over one acre when you add them all together. But they're little infill sites, and the basis of this is from the former redevelopment project area days. We're finally getting around to redeveloping those sites.
So basically, the meeting is in a room, you'll maybe have some maps, will there be any sort of, so Pasadena, when they've been doing the redevelopment, they actually had two phases of meetings, visioning, and even walkthroughs.
Sure, charrettes. So, good point. Let me put this phase of the project in perspective. We will probably have that opportunity, but once the developer has been identified and as a part of their, as a part of their pre-development process, which we call an exclusive negotiations period, they will provide their concept, have community outreach, provide information on their plan, and I believe there'll be plenty of opportunity to have that type of engagement. Here is just an input device for us, for me and my staff. We want to, before we issue the RFP, the actual document, we want to make sure that we've discussed it with the community in terms of needs and wishes for the specific neighborhood. Are there themes that we should be looking at? Are there specific commercial services that we should be aware of? Are there any concerns with height or massing that we want to stay away from? Those are the general things that I think we want to address at our upcoming meeting on the 13th. So it's much, it's much more general, broader-based, and it's really to use as a tool for the RFP document to get a better response from the developer at this stage.
Okay, Councilmember Sarah.
Aside from sharing this information here, what other outreach are you trying to do to the community? Are you sending flyers to people's homes or is there outreach to, you know, get a good turnout of this meeting?
Well, the first part of this outreach is tonight where I'm presenting it to the town council. I'd be more than happy to take any other suggestions on how to outreach. Given that this is sort of the preliminary first step in this fairly elongated procurement process, I'm going to assume that there's going to be plenty of opportunities to have further community engagement. With that said, again, I'd be more than happy to take suggestions on how to make this as known in the community as possible, given the constraints of the physical space and what we're trying to do.
Councilmember Jones.
I will be getting the word out. I'll get the word out, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then I can put it on the website.
That would be very helpful of your, yeah. So you would like for me to, okay, I will.
She hasn't.
Yeah, yeah. Email it to me and then I'll get it to her.
Will do.
Well, this is the very first stage, this is the very beginning. Well, and then they can say it to me, believe me, you know, I'm going to get it there.
Councilmember Jones.
Oh, don't do it, okay, sorry.
The concern is those that may not have access to the, your preferred way of communication. I think it goes along with what Councilmember Becerra said, what are the ways to get this out so that they can register? By the way, we've already, some of us here already registered. So, so it's not, it's not a lot of spot.
Yeah, and again, we were not trying to exclude anyone by no means. It was just.
Just so you know.
But again, I would really want to emphasize that this is the first stage of a number of potential engagement opportunities, and as we move forward with the process, I will definitely inform you all and to the extent that we need bigger venues in the future.
Well, and I think Ron, you really are like the center post for this, right? And you'll get it out to the folks that you know would be, would be interested and, and the folks in your area would know maybe what the needs were. The only concern is that it's an area that lots of people in Altadena frequent, so it sounds like we'll have other times or provide their feedback another way.
Yeah, we'll have other times, and I had asked for it to be a neighborhood kind of thing, but it went to a community thing, so.
Okay, I think we, yeah, I think we get the point. The point is this is an expanded neighborhood outreach, and we respect that, and if there's anything else that is needed, it will be direct back to Councilmember Jones and then we can get involved.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions from council? Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I'll take any extra ones you have.
Altadena Pipeline Project, and that will be, do we have anyone introducing them or? Okay, it doesn't say that. Helen Shaw, Public Affairs Manager. Okay, so let's have Helen Shaw come on first.
Good evening, Town Council. Thank you very much for this opportunity, for the guest company to be here tonight to explain a project that we will be starting probably in July. I, first of all, I want to introduce the team that's here. Eric Rivas, he's the Outreach Manager, so he's going to tell you about notification and getting out into the community with enough time so that the residents know that the project will be in progress. The other members of the team are Mark Clark, and he's the Construction Team Lead for the PSEP, which is the name of the project, and then Mark Morikawa, and he's the Construction Operations Engineer. And so they'll be able to respond to your questions, more of the technical questions, and while Eric is more the outreach. And I'm the Public Affairs Manager. My area is all the West End. My area is all the West San Gabriel Valley and I've been to Altadena many times. Just a little bit of background, the gas company has been in existence for a hundred and fifty years, bringing natural gas. We buy it in other states, bring it in transmission lines, and then it goes into distribution lines. We are in Southern California, starting in Visalia, and we go to the Mexican border. We have about twenty-two million customers. So, what are we going to be doing? We're going to be doing testing and upgrading. As a, just generally, we have been testing all our pipelines, actually for many years, with Pipeline Integrity Program. And those have been, the bigger pipelines and replacing them if they needed to be replaced. And so the last eight years, we have enhanced this program, we've speeded up to make sure that we test all our pipelines and adding enhancements to continue the flow of natural gas to our customers and also to keep this community safe. And so this brings us to the valve upgrades that are occurring at Crosby and Lincoln. So we hope to respond to your questions. And so I'm going to bring Eric, so, oh, by the way, we, we did pass out the PowerPoint because we feel it's easier. Yeah, we felt it was easier this way. This is a tool that we use in many settings, but we want you to ask about what's going on in Altadena. Those are, that's why we're here. So, Eric?
And thank you Veronica for setting this up for us.
Thank you for that introduction Helen. So, good evening everyone, again, my name is Eric Rivas, I'm the Outreach Manager with SoCal Gas. So if you look on the first page of the presentation, page two, just to give you some background on the project. The California Public Utilities Commission, or CPUC for short, directed all California pipeline operators to develop a plan to modernize older interstate natural gas transmission pipelines. So in response to this directive from the CPUC, SoCal Gas developed a Pipeline Safety Enhancement Plan, or PSEP for short. Now what this entails is pressure testing or replacing pipeline segments to validate them and make sure they meet modern safety standards, installing automatic shut-off or remote-controlled valves, retrofitting pipelines to accommodate modern inline inspection tools, and this is all for the, for the cause of safety because safety is our top priority for our customers to make sure you can safely cook your food, heat your water, heat your homes, and also for the safety of our crews and the communities that we serve. So if you look on the next page, the location will be at the intersection of Crosby Street and Lincoln Avenue. We're going to be doing work at that intersection and we're also going to be using a vacant lot at the corner of Crosby Street and Lincoln Avenue for what we call our lay-down yard. That's where we're going to lay down our tools and the materials that we're going to use for the job. Now moving on to valve upgrades. First, let me give you a background of what valves are. Valves are mechanical devices that control the flow of natural gas through our pipelines. There's two types of valve technology. Remote control valves, these allow, these valves allow, this allows valves to be opened or closed remotely by system operators from a central control location, and automatic shut-off valves. These are equipped with a control device that automatically triggers the actuator and shuts off the flow of natural gas in the event of a large pressure drop. Now continuing with valve upgrades. The reason for upgrading the valves is, the reason for upgrading or retrofitting valves on the pipeline system is because it provides gas operators with greater flexibility and shorter response times in the event of an emergency. Now this is important because we can do this, like I said, from a control, from a control center remotely, we don't have to manually go out and shut off the valve automatically. And that greatly increases the safety of our pipelines and our system as a whole. Now some of the things you can expect during this job, it is a construction job, so you will have some traffic rerouting, some parking restrictions, large trucks and equipment in the area, work-related noise, some possible excavation and dust, and the odor of natural gas when we're venting our gas. We try, we try to do our best to coordinate with our cities and the way we do that is we coordinate with cities and counties on project details and timing, traffic plans, emergency response plans, permits, and community outreach. Now with the community outreach aspect of the job, we brief local city staff and council members, we communicate with impacted community members, we send out construction notification letters weeks before construction begins. I personally go out with a team and we deliver notifications in person, and on the notifications, it contains my, my work cellphone, my email address, as well as Helen's work cellphone and email address. So if anyone has any concerns or questions, they have the way to get ahold of us without any issue. We also provide project information for the city websites if they require it or request it. We notify emergency responders, police and fire, we're doing our tests, and we follow up the local government or impacted community members after the work is completed. And lastly, we have our contact information. You have my contact information on the last page of the presentation. You have my cellphone number, my email address, as well as Helen's cellphone number and email address if you have any questions or concerns later on in the project.
Okay, council member Knapp?
Yes?
Did I hear Helen correctly that this is supposed to start in July?
We're looking right now at...
September. September, okay. So then none of the postcards or letters to residents have gone out yet?
No, no, that hasn't gone out yet.
Got it, thank you.
Council member Shida?
What is the expected length of time for this project?
It'll be approximately twelve weeks.
Council member Marcusson's?
When, when you're talking about local government, that's the county for us?
Yeah.
And so are you working with road maintenance or, and coordinating with them to let them know what you're doing to their roads and/or all the rest of it?
Yes, yes, well, that, we meet with the county before we even get the projects, we start the project so that they let us know what they expect with the project after it's completed and how long they want the road to be put back into its original condition.
So Public Works will be coordinating with you directly all through the project? Does that, do you have a contact at Public Works that you're going to be working with?
Yes, we do have contacts at Public Works within the county.
Okay, okay.
Council member Robertson?
The staging for your equipment is occurring in this vacant lot at the corner of Crosby and Lincoln, and the work is happening where?
It's going to be in the intersection.
Ah, within the intersection.
It's going in the driveway to that lot, right across from the restaurant in the, on the small...
Any more questions from council?
I think...
Okay, council member Jones?
I'm sorry. Council member Simmons?
This work has nothing to do with the, with the individual residents' main replacements that are going on in various areas of Altadena.
No, no, this is a valve automation.
Can you tell me anything about what's, what's behind that project and how sensitive it is?
Do you happen to know the intersections and where the work is taking place?
Mughal Highlands, Rio Crest Drive, Pleasant Ridge.
Okay, that, that's actually something, you email me afterwards and then I can investigate that, I wouldn't know that.
And then there's, there are, some of the other surrounding streets are getting marked up for, for the, same kind of thing.
Okay, well, we, we're a large company and we have different departments and there's different projects going on. I think the one you're referring to is called our DIMP project. That project is actually replacing pipelines. And they're replacing the ladders, the connection between the pipeline and the home. And so that's another different group of people.
From the street main into the meters.
Pardon me?
From the street main into the meters, you know, kind of systematically around the...
Right, and they're relocating meters where they need to, where the meters are not to code. So, in some cases, they're actually physically relocating the, that happened, we've had it on my street too. They're relocating the meters because they were put in not to code and they're taking this opportunity to put them into code.
From an outreach standpoint, it was a bit of a fail because...
Well, they only tell the people whose house it's...
No, we have...
They weren't told very much.
We hire people to do the outreach, so if they're not doing it, we need to know, yeah. We do as much, we've been doing this for so long that we have it down to the signs, we, we do the outreach. We hire people, do, when we hire contractors, they do the outreach, they do what Eric does. They knock on the door, they leave notices, and so some people may not be home, but we leave the notices. So we try to do as much, not, nothing's a hundred percent perfect, but we, we, we do everything we can. This project, Eric is assigned to do the outreach, so I wanted you to get to know him because you may see him around. And then also, you may see him on other projects too that come up in Altadena, so you already know him, so.
Yeah, and Helen, if we, if, on the meter replacement, the pipeline replacement, the lateral replacement, on, on my street, mine's fine, so I wasn't notified, but then I saw work going on. I talked to all the people on my street and they were all notified and knew what was going on and were okay. But if we had an issue, we could contact you?
You can contact me.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And just to add on, so sometimes the work runs concurrently, so you have the, Helen mentioned then?
Out to the mic, please. Thank you.
Sometimes the work runs concurrently, so you have the Distribution Integrity Management Plan, which Helen was talking about, that's separate from the Pipeline Safety Enhancement Plan, which is what this project is.
Well, and by the way, on the, the individual house thing that you're doing, on my street, I had three different crews working at three different houses, none of whom knew what the other ones were doing because the way it gets assigned is here's your address, go and do your address, right? So it, it, it's, it's not real coordinated, but I think you've been doing it for a long time and so as long as the, the, in, the affected household knows what's going on, I didn't know, I went running out and said, what the heck?
Yeah.
So, anyway, yeah, okay.
All right, council member Wong?
So do you know approximately what hours you'll be working?
It'll be from seven AM to five PM, Monday through Thursday.
Through Thursday. And then you will be detouring people potentially off of Lincoln?
Actually, have it here, one second.
Actually, Lincoln shouldn't be affected too much with the traffic control and the work hours are that for the normal work and then there'll actually be tie-in days when we actually separate the main line and that will go continuously until we start to finish if it's ten hours or twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
If you don't mind, may we ask that you come this way because they have difficulty trying to capture you? Thank you.
There's that behind the seat.
Okay. Okay. Council member Basara?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, how many people are going to be notified? Is that specifically within the one hundred households within the vicinity, within half a mile? We notify everyone that lives within five hundred feet of the, of the work radio, the work area. And second question was if there's going to be any service interruption? No.
Okay, any other question, council member Jones?
I've been talking to people in the community about this, it seems like this was started before and now it's being continued. Was there another time when this was done?
No, not on this, no, not on this project. There are different departments, as he stated, the Pipeline Enhancement Program, this is their first shot here.
Okay, actually, let me add something to that. That was the same question that I had. I think maybe about three years ago, there was some work that was done. I personally went and knocked on the doors, there are businesses there, well, I might as well ask my question now, there are businesses there that had issues because of the, I guess the little trench that was dug and traffic, so five hundred feet was inadequate for those people, those businesses on that stretch, that corridor. So let's make sure, I'm happy that you will personally go out there and notify them, but let's make sure that something's worked out, that they know the depth and the extent of what you're going to do so that they will be prepared. We don't want them to be shut down for twelve weeks, that's too long for those small businesses in that area.
Okay, yeah, we can go out further than five hundred feet, it's not an issue.
Okay, council member Robertson?
Hi, so given the CPUC mandate and Altadena's not, you know, all natural gas customers, are there any plans that you're aware of to do this work elsewhere in the community anytime soon?
Elsewhere here in Altadena?
Yeah.
I would have to check with our construct...
So I don't believe so at this time, so we're doing the supply lines and for you guys, that's this line that supplies all the gas to this area. Transmission lines are further out of your reach, but the supply line is the only one affected you guys.
Council member Sotterlin?
I think my question involves in, in notification, yes, you're talking about whether it's five hundred feet or a thousand, whatever it may be, but if there are going to be any kind of closures or, you know, trucks there, other, there's a lot of people in other parts of Altadena that go through there and so some advanced notification would be helpful because then we can spread that news to the other.
We also, we can send out a traffic advisory also to, for the project, also make other people aware.
Where, where does, where does that go? Sorry, I don't know. When you send one, what hap, where does it?
We could send that out to local media and also if you have anything, any mechanisms within your own city website or your, I mean, your, your town council website?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Council member Robertson?
So, so to Pat's point, Lincoln Avenue being a, a major thoroughfare in this community, there's a lot of folks, you know, all the way up the hill that, that use that and, and back and forth. Perhaps in your coordination with the county with road maintenance or CHP or whomever, you can get your hands on a changeable message sign to let folks that drive that corridor regularly, give them a little heads up that this is coming, that there are going to be, you know, changes in the traffic pattern or whatever, and when, and give folks enough time. So, you know, rather than knock on thousands of doors, knock on hundreds of doors and get a CMS.
Yeah?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Changeable message sign?
Yeah. Any further questions from council?
Can you prefer the eye?
No, we do not do audience, we don't do audience. Well, you, you, after they finished, you can see them in the, in the back.
You can ambush them outside.
Thank you so much for coming and you, you want to keep in touch with the council member that represent that area so that you will know exactly what is going on and...
Antonio.
So it'll be council member Jones and council member Basara.
Okay, and again, my contact information is on the last page of the presentation.
Okay.
I'm just going to clarify, this is Mark Clark that Helen referred to earlier, this other gentleman is Mark Clark from construction. And that's, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions up here?
He said he's good, he's good.
I don't want to get too taken out of the...
You got it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, item number four point three, that would be collaborate Pasadena and council member Sanyika?
Okay, in addition to his broad work in media, coaching, and wellness, Dr. Nano E. Grant Jr. serves as Executive Director of the Center for Community and Social Impact at Pacific Oaks College in Pasadena, California, and has a long history of direct mental, mental health service delivery and administrative oversight for foster care system, child welfare child welfare, uh, programs, education systems, and homeless mental, um, wellness services. Dr. Grant works diligently to increase awareness on mental wellness, issues parenting, child development, and social cultural events that impact, uh, citizens of our country and our world, as an NBC mental health and parenting expert, uh, while also consulting on films, books, adaptations, and documentaries. His most recent publication is Social Learning Theory and Strength-Based Approaches to Counseling African-American, um, adolescent males, in a chapter, um, in counseling African-American males. His newest book, um, Black Male Behavioral Health and Intergenerational Colonialism: A Noose Across, um, Across Nations, is in publication with Pellgrave-McMillan due out fall 2019. Dr. Grant is an equity, diversity, and inclusion practitioner, and also operates a boutique training and consulting firm, Mindful Training Solutions, and he is the new Executive Director for Collaborate Pasadena.
And his bio is way too long, thank you for that, Gloria. Uh, thank you for having me, um, to your town council meeting today. Uh, I just wanted to come out and share a little bit about our new center at Pacific Oaks College, some of you have heard of us, some of you may not have. Uh, we're in Pasadena, right at Fair Oaks and Eureka, right by the, um, Smart and Final. Uh, we recently purchased the property about two years ago, we've been around for seventy years, we have the college, um, and the children's school, which is a, um, uh, two to five-year-old children's school, private school in Pasadena. Um, and our mission has been grounded in social justice and equity, we have three schools at the college, uh, the School of Cultural and Family Psychology, the School of Human Development, and the School of Education. Um, and our pedagogy works really well to promote social justice and inclusivity and equity, but as an institution, we had not been doing the work in the community, which is why we started, uh, the Center for Community and Social Impact. Um, the community of, for, the Center for Community and Social Impact, uh, we started a soft launch in October, uh, I was still covering two roles at that time, um, and now we've gone to higher launch in January, and we've been partnering with a variety of different community partners in Pasadena, Altadena, and Sierra Madre. Um, as a part of the work of the center, we, uh, adopted Collaborate Pasadena, um, which is Mayor Ternick's effort to support community partnerships. Uh, Council, um, Member Gloria sits on our leadership council, and that's how, uh, we're connected, and she invited me to come here and introduce, uh, our center. And what we do, uh, and I have a few more of these, I'm sorry. Uh, I only made twenty copies, I tried to be green and not print out fifty copies when I don't know how many people are going to be there, so twenty is my area, my sweet spot. Um, so, what we do is, uh, I developed the center across kind of a tripod, three different main areas, and you'll see on page two, um, developing strong, sustainable community partnerships, engage in research and scholarship for community impact, and promote service models for sustainable change. I'm not going to read through this entire thing, um, you all can take a time, take time to read through it, um, on your own, but oftentimes, when you go to a nonprofit website, or somebody who's doing some really great work, you'll see a university or a college's name there saying, "Researchers at USC say such and such," or "Researchers at UCLA say such and such." And, uh, because we've been experts in early childhood education, and psychology, um, and in development across the lifespan for over seven decades, uh, we felt like we needed to start promoting additional research-based efforts, uh, in the community. And so, we're partnering with different, uh, partners, uh, with PUSD, with, um, Young and Healthy, with just a variety of partners in this area. Um, PUSD just got a major grant for, um, I hate the name of this grant, but it's called the Underperforming Students Grant, and it's not a strength-based language, so I hate to use it, but that's where the money's coming from, and so, we'll be participating in kind of running that for PUSD and supporting, well, we'll be participating and supporting it. Um, I'm presenting to the Pasadena Unified School District on next week, as it relates to what we like to do with that. We're looking at the early childhood hubs throughout the area to do some analysis and do some research to say, um, not just the work is being done, but academia likes to measure stuff, and say what we need to do to fix it or keep it going. And so, we're looking to be that resource in this particular community, Pasadena, Altadena, um, and Sierra Madre. So, we just wanted to make sure you all knew, uh, that we were here, and we're looking for community partnerships on a variety of areas, uh, whether we're talking foster youth, homelessness, we're doing some work with vets, we're doing some work with the formerly incarcerated, um, but just looking at social justice models to support, um, nonprofit agencies and communities, and so. That's really it in a nutshell, I'll take any questions if you guys have any.
Okay, uh, thank you so much, any questions for Dr. Grant? Councilmember Marcusen.
So, can you help us understand, or maybe just me understand, what your output is? Do you, do these organizations hire you to do the, to do research and then provide them with an implementation plan or something?
It depends, so for instance, we're working with the hubs, um, the hub network is a, an opportunity for, um, the city of Pasadena to identify community-based areas where families with young children can come and get services. When I saw that this was being developed, I said, "Well, that's awesome, but how are you going to determine whether or not the services you provide create a change?" Not just count how many people came in and got brochures, but how did they actually change their behavior and do longitudinal studies associated with it? They don't have money to support that, so I'm writing a grant to get money to support that. Some agencies are writing us directly into their grants to support some of those research efforts, and so, most of these, most of the dollars coming from this, um, are being supported through grant dollars.
Okay, and are the hu, what, what's a hub?
A hub, the hub networks, they have them all over the country, they are ways that different communities have identified to provide massive amounts of resources or services to communities in need. And so, um, the hubs are located at different pre-existing service agencies, and they're creating a space where kid, where families who have children from birth to five can come and get resources and gain access to resources they wouldn't have, like reading readiness, kindergarten readiness, child development, those types of things.
And are all of the hubs that you're working with now in, physically located in Pasadena?
Uh, yes, I believe so, I have to verify that, um, they, they haven't been all established yet.
Okay, Pasadena does not speak at all for Altadena. They, we may have schools that are part of PUSD, but as a community.
Well, understand, the program that I'm running, Collaborate, is Pasadena, Altadena, and Sierra Madre, and so that particular project is in fact just Pasadena, but I'm here today to build partnerships and connections with all these communities, because Collaborate is Pasadena, Altadena, and Sierra Madre.
Right, I understand that.
I understand that that project may not impact you, but I'm just explaining, that's one of the pieces of work that we're doing.
That's where you were getting your, you said we go to the hubs and get the.
I was giving you one example of a project that we're working on and that we're partnering with, and that if there may have been opportunities whereby you had some support for your birth-to-five families here, we may be able to partner in that way as well.
Okay, so with PUSD, which is a public school, and you're dealing with private schools, I got confused about the private.
Well, PUSD has jurisdiction over charter schools, they support some efforts for a lot of different children, we're focused on kids and families.
Okay.
Um, I live in Los Angeles, my son attends a private school in Los Angeles, so I'm very familiar with that landscape as well. Um, I do understand that there's a different landscape here in Altadena, and I'm completely aware of that, I'm not, um, not knowledgeable about that, so I do understand the differences and nuances, which is why I'm here, and not just focused on presenting and doing work in Pasadena, because again, um, I've been tasked with running a program that is Pasadena, Altadena, and Sierra Madre.
Okay, so Jennifer is our, um, Education Committee Chair.
Awesome.
And I'm sure would like to have some conversations about, about that. The other thing I'd like for us just to think about is, w- w- we, we were asked long ago by the mayor to have a person on a committee that was a Pasadena committee with PUSD, um, activity. That, that's, that's how we got involved in this, and I, I think that, based on maybe what Jennifer learns, or whatever else, that the council itself ought to think about the best way for us to support this kind of an effort, if it's not an actual PUSD anymore effort, which it was originally, so. Which is why you have Pasadena, Altadena, Sierra Madre, is because PUSD is in those, has schools in those three communities, that's how, that's how that started, right?
I think, yes, that is, that, that was the ideology of it, but I think the spirit of it now is less that and more of the collaborative spirit, that we're all neighbors. Um, and I think sometimes, and I hope this doesn't offend anybody in the room, but you guys don't know me well enough to know I'm a pretty straight shooter, um, I think sometimes places like Sierra Madre and Altadena actually underestimate some of the concerns that warrant support from external partners. Um, and so I think it's valuable, to be honest, that really exploring the needs of a community and identifying the fact that there are marginalized people right here in these borders who need support, um, who need some partners, who need some studies, who need some resources and research.
Yeah, I would say that there's not a soul sitting at this table today that underestimates any of that.
Not at this table, but I've spoken to a lot of partners in the community who don't believe it. And I'm not meaning to be combative, and I'm not trying, attempting to create a debate, what I'm explaining is that these types of programs, in spite of the differences in these municipalities, value, or have value.
All, all I'm saying is that as a, as an organization, maybe we ought to see what we can find out, and see if there's a, a way, the best way for us to support the effort, that's all.
Uh, your point well taken.
Yeah, it, it has changed, that's all, yeah.
Uh, can, and I believe, uh, Councilmember, uh, Sanyeka had explained that, and how it morphed into, um.
Right, but we haven't revisited it since it morphed.
Okay, we will get, we, we will get to that, but I, like I said, there was a presentation that was made, and that there was a motion, uh, that was also placed to be able to move forward, so if we need to revisit it, then we can do that as a council.
Yeah.
All right, um, Councilmember Robertson.
Hi, Dr. Grant.
Hello.
Nice to meet you, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Uh, congrats on your new role, and you sort of spoke to this a little bit, um, I was wondering if you could speak to your vision for Collaborate Pasadena, so, I've been on the council four years now, and I think for three of those, we've been involved with Collaborate Pasadena, and so we've heard what it's done in the past, what is your vision for what it does in the future?
It's a great question, um, I've been at Pacific Oaks College for the last, uh, six years now, and this role is really kind of providing the school with an opportunity to really affect change and move needles in several ways. Uh, the members of Collaborate Pasadena Leadership Council have been very clear about the role, um, in the community is not necessarily, um, activities per se, meaning that they're not planning to start programs, however, uh, what we're looking to do is identify opportunities whereby this leadership council is actually responsible for operationalizing things, whether they're, whether they have their hands on them or not. And so, my goal with Collaborate Pasadena is to build relationships that make it such that you guys have a town council executive team meeting, and you say, "Oh, you know what, we have a vehicle now that can support research, or that can support ideas, and we're top of mind to come to, to say, 'You know what, we'd love to partner with you because we're having this concern, and we can't quite figure out, uh, what it is.'" Um, some of the former iteration of Collaborate Pasadena have been associated with simply looking at the number of connections created, identifying how people have built relationships, uh, that's not sufficient for me, and so, we're looking to actually create larger reports to kind of demonstrating how all the different community partners are working together, so I'm talking public health, I'm talking foster care, I'm talking a very, a true, true systemic approach, and that's what I'd like to show, uh, through our work, because that was the original vision. However, it hasn't always moved in that direction, and so, to really be able to build tangible partnerships, but partnerships that actually move needles in certain areas, whatever those areas are that, that come to mind, and, and that we can fund, uh, uh, to be honest with you, where the grant money is, that's where a lot of the work is going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I, I'd like to make a comment, because I, I, I served on the, um, Pasadena Budget Advisory Committee, and I do know that the dynamics of the, um, uh, the students, uh, within the Pasadena Unified School District is significantly changed. And I do know that there are many people in Altadena that are dependent on public school, uh, I'm sorry, on private schools, so there are still, uh, what I like to call marginalized individuals that are not tapping into the potential resources that can be made available. So, I definitely think that what you have to offer comes into play. We want to see, uh, the public school to perform a whole lot better, maybe there is something within Altadena, within the, uh, you know, the, the leadership of the, uh, Education Committee, uh, as well as, uh, Councilmember Sanyeka, that we can bring this together through your leadership, is totally a collaborative effort. So, there is something missing, because the PUSD, uh, school's performance is really not what it should be, and that's largely because of the mix within the, uh, within the, uh, the classroom. As those supposedly, those that could breach the average, uh, in private schools, they can afford it, but other people cannot afford it. So, I see.
Yeah.
Definitely, um, something that is of importance, uh, so, a way that we'll be able to, uh, make it better for Altadena. Uh, we do not have our own, uh, school district, we are dependent and reliant on Pasadena Unified School District. Uh, thank, at least, thank goodness, they're not shutting down any, any of our schools, but we have been the one that there, as of today. So, uh, we, we are the, I guess, so-called stepchild of the school district, we, we want to be a little bit more proactive, at least that's my two cents into this.
Yeah.
Because I go into the classroom, uh, my children are a product of the public school, so I do see firsthand what goes on just based on the mix in the classroom, so I thank you for coming in.
There's a lot of really great opportunities there, and thank you for saying that, for this partnership, and there's bi-directional, bi-directional benefits that can happen, right? So, there are things happening in Altadena schools that partnerships with PUSD, they could benefit from some of that knowledge, some of that training, some of those skills, and because there's not always, uh, a collaborative spirit, they lose some of that, and then you can think about some of the private schools here to partner with. My son is one of only, is one of only three mono-racial black children at his school, and so, having people understand equity, diversity, inclusion in private schools when there's a small number of children of color, that may be a need for Altadena schools, that's very valuable to make those kids feel seen. Um, is there anti-bias curriculum in Altadena private schools, I don't know, and so, we're talking about an entire system of kids, be they private, charter, or public, my goal is to see this as a system, um, wherever they are, and I know Collaborate's mission is specifically, um, PUSD, but my mission as the Executive Director of this center is larger than just that. Collaborate Pasadena is about a third of what my entire center covers, or maybe even just a quarter of what we do, so. So, I'm looking forward to partnering.
Any more questions from?
Jennifer needs to talk to you about.
That'd be great.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
I didn't, I didn't see your contact.
I did not put it there deliberately, no, I'm just kidding, I didn't. I have cards with me, I'll give you a, I'll give you a card, and anybody else who wants a card before I leave, you're welcome to have one, I have my contact information with me.
Okay, uh, thank you so much, Dr. Grant, for coming.
Have a great day, everybody, thank you.
I just would like to add, before you finish, that before the business community was invited to be, to sit on the leadership council, we would really like to invite someone from the, a representative from our Education Committee to be on our committee, if it's possible.
Uh, will Chamber be, uh, okay, I mean, is, when you say business, will that include Chamber?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Um, when I, when I, um, came to the, um, the Leadership Council, we did have a representative from the actual, uh, Chamber of Commerce there.
I'm speaking of the Chamber of Commerce in Altadena.
In, in Altadena, yes, we had a representative, Meredith, Meredith Miller.
Okay.
But she's not, she's no longer there.
Yeah, that was, that was Meredith Miller.
In the chamber, uh, that was, that was a representative from the business community.
Mm-hmm.
But the outreach to the business community was not done through the town council. The town council was not the representative of Collaborate Pasadena to choose who is going to be the leader from the business community.
Mm-hmm.
But Collaborate Pasadena chose different sectors to find leaders from. One of them was to reach to the, uh, ATC, and to find a member to represent the ATC. Another section was from the business community, so I don't know if it's our place now, unless Collaborate Pasadena wishes us to do that, to seek, uh, a different representative from the business community, that's up to Collaborate Pasadena, the organization itself, not the ATC. That's up to Collaborate Pasadena, the organization itself, not the ATC.
No, we are not suggesting that. Uh, council member Sanika was saying that a representative from, uh, the community, the business community will be good to have, uh, I guess, because she already knows that the person that was there was no longer active, and that's why I was asking. Uh, it is a good idea. So if the Chamber does not have someone now representing, uh, she's suggesting, uh, as a, a member of the Town Council that it would be nice to have somebody from the business community.
So Doug Cauliflow is here. He's, he's the President Chamber, and, and so he might be a good person to contact directly for any Chamber contacts.
Okay.
He's, he's right there. Raise your hand, Doug.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So, so that's the way to hook the Chamber in.
Sounds great, sounds great.
Uh, thank you again.
Thank you all.
Moving on to, uh, committee reports, Land Use. Uh, council member Robertson, on behalf of the Chair, uh, council member Marcusson.
Thank you very much. Uh, the Land Use Committee had its regular meeting two weeks ago in this room, on this day and this time. And, uh, it was a rather quiet meeting. We had one presentation from a representative of Verizon Wireless who is looking to renew their conditional use permit for the existing wireless facility that's on top of 2235 North Lake, which is the building of Vanderhoefson. Um, you got the Pizza Hut right there on the corner, et cetera. Um, so that will, there's going to have to be due diligence on the part of the council members, uh, in the surrounding area, knocking on doors, um, taking the community's temperature on that project. Um, so there was no action taken. There will likely be action in the near future, maybe at the next meeting, perhaps not, depending on how many, how many doors we see fit. Um, one more thing while I've got the mic. Altadena Parkway Trees. Google Altadena Parkway Trees and you can get yourself, if you have a Parkway and it's just so, a free street tree from LA County. Altadena Parkway Trees for your Parkway.
Right, and, and if I, if I, if I may, as also from Land Use, um, I saw posted on social media that people were complaining that it took three months to get a tree. I think the deal is that they will not plant a tree that's not in the, in the fall or the winter because the tree will die. There's not enough water in the world to plant a big tree. They plant relatively large-sized trees. I have one in my front yard. Um, so get on the list. We're happy, we encourage everybody that can get a tree. You have to promise to water it. Um, and, uh, you know, I, mine's probably five years old and is doing really, really well and big, and I would encourage everybody to do that. Um, we will have items on the agenda for the July meeting. We have, um, an alcohol CUP coming up for Bulgarini, um, that I was talking to Akori last night about, and we may have a presentation for that in July. Um, and there's a couple, Pat mentioned that she has a couple. So Land Use is going to be, um, heating back up again. The last thing I know I mentioned already, but, um, I'm expecting that they're going to be striping New York Drive this week, hopefully, um, on the section that they have completed. Uh, it, the road is still closed because it's not striped. Um, and the, uh, they will be, you know, I, I want to say the 26th was the day they said they would start on the next section. But the corner of Altadena Drive, Altadena Drive, the corner of New York and Allen, um, requires pretty substantial work. And so I don't know how that corner's going to be handled. Um, and then they will start the work between Allen and Hill is the next section. And they'll do, as they did the first time, they'll do the, um, uh, curbs and gutters first and then do the road. I, the last thing is, and I know Victoria and I have been working on this, um, I had made arrangements with the New York Drive people to have the, um, guardrails that are on the road be patinaed to look like they're brown or wooden or whatever they look like, but certainly much better than shiny silver. Um, Victoria said, wait a minute, mine are shiny silver on Allen. What's up with that? They have now corrected that. I also made arrangements with the county that those are now standard for Altadena. So anywhere that they have to put in or replace guardrails in Altadena, they will be the blend into the, um, environment, uh, you know, look. Which is, it makes me happy every time I see them because they really do go away in, to your eyes. They really do.
Where's an example of these now?
They're, uh, well, on New York Drive between, um, uh, Altadena Drive and Allen, but also on Allen north of...
New York.
North of...
It's north of New York, but it's further up.
Yes.
North of Mendocino?
Yeah, or south, north and south of Mendocino, right there, up, up to Altadena.
Now, I, I'm not taking credit for the big orange cross marks that they have at the end. Like, they have a big thing at the end that says, don't, don't run into this, because it's the end of, it's the beginning of one of these things. And they're ugly and they have big black and yellow stripes or whatever, but I did the best I could with what we had. The rest of the guardrails are, um, it looks better, honestly, on New York Drive than it does on Allen. But it's a lot better than the silver ones on...
I do understand what, what the rationale was for the, for the black asphalt sidewalk and, and curbing.
Where?
Um, just south of, on Allen, just south of Mendocino, um, on the east side.
On the east side of the street?
Yeah.
No, I know.
It couldn't be, whether it was temporary or, but was part of the, the, the new board.
Is it asphalt or is it, or is it rubber? Because they put...
Asphalt.
It's asphalt, and I wonder if it's a bus turnout?
No.
I have to go back down and look. There were some issues regarding handicap access and creating, um, making sure that the corner accesses added up.
It may have been temporary and they, they had to go back, but...
But we also got...
I know what you're talking about.
In, on, on New York Drive, there is also, people will see that there are also patches of rubber sidewalk. Um, and they're, they're, they look, they're dark because they don't let people on bicycles to, or I guess we're not supposed to be on the sidewalks with bicycles, but skateboards, whatever it is, on going along and thinking that they're not going to go, when they hit the rubber. And the rubber's there for the trees because the curb is damaging the tree roots and the rubber allows them to grow. So, um, if you, if you see any of that, that's what I was thinking, maybe they put in, but if it's asphalt, it's different.
Okay, uh, let's move on, uh, on this. Uh, do you have anything else to report on behalf of? Okay, all right, uh, next, uh, item is Safe Streets Mobility. And as council member Wong, uh, we're really pushing for time, so let's do the best we can, that we can to be brief.
Sure, so the Safe Streets, uh, Committee will be doing some work for upcoming fall, uh, including hopefully a bike, uh, assessment along Jackson Elementary and a really fun event at the Bob Lucas Library. So we'll be meeting, I'm, if you're interested, uh, let me know, sign up. And we're also looking at our next meeting to be happening regarding those two things soon. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Election Committee, uh, council member Lee, uh, before you start, thank you so much, the, uh, Election Committee, for the wonderful job that you all did. Uh, I consider it to have been turned out, that it turned out very well. Um, we did have some challenges, but last minute you all were able to pull it off and, uh, get people to volunteer, so thank you so much.
This is the Altadena Town Council Election Committee Report of June 18th, 2019. The Altadena Town Council Election Committee comprised of myself, Pat Sutherland, Allison Amagacher, and Diane Marcusson. We had eight census tracts, well, we have eight census tracts, and only one of them was without a candidate. We had two voting days in June. June 4th was an early voting day and the polling place was Altadena Library. June 8th was the regular voting day, and we had four polling locations. Altadena Library, Hoopla, Farnsworth Park, Altadena Golf Course. We had 15 volunteers to staff these polling sites, including Town Council members. And I'd like to thank them. Erin Tashida, Allison Amagacher, Kenny Meyer, Justin Robertson, Gabriella Carparco Robertson, Warren Skidmore, Akori Ezimy, Carlotta Martin, Gloria Sanika, Marge Nichols, Jean Bunagel, Karen Gibson, Ann Coman, Antonio Becerra, Mike Veselic, and Mary Veselic. We thank all of these volunteers. We absolutely could not have done it without you. In this year's election, we had a total of 240 votes cast for voting locations, one day of early voting, 240 total. And here are the vote tallies by census tract. Forty-six zero one, Victoria Knapp with 42 votes. Forty-six zero two, we had three candidates. This is our only CT with three candidates. Joe Brumfield, one, Randy Connor, five, Billy Malone, 23. Forty-six zero three point zero one, Dorothy Wong, 31. Forty-six oh three point oh two, that's where we had no candidate running. Forty-six ten, Veronica Jones, with 54. Forty-six eleven, Nick Santangelo, with 28. Forty-six twelve, Reggie Wilkins, with 21. And forty-six thirteen, Sylvia Vega, with 35. The winners of the election are Victoria Knapp, Billy Malone, Dorothy Wong, Veronica Jones, Nick Santangelo, Reggie Wilkins, Sylvia Vega. And I move that we accept this as a certification of the election.
Okay, council member, uh, the Chair of the Election Committee, council member Lee, has moved a motion and properly seconded by council member, uh, Thomas. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay, that is, that's it.
Can we just take a minute if we could? Nick is here tonight. He's the first, he's our new person. If he could just say hi. He, 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 he thought enough to come and have a meeting with us tonight and listen, and so I just wanted to say thank you and welcome.
Okay.
I'm in.
Thank you. Okay, speaking of election, uh, the Slate Committee, uh, the Slate Committee will be, uh, thank you for those that accepted to be on the committee. Uh, council member Robertson will chair the Slate Committee, and the members will be council member, uh, Becerra, council member Vega, and council member Wilkins. Okay, so, uh, council member Robertson, would you like to, oh, first of all, uh, everybody that is mentioned, all of you are, uh, agreeing to serve. I did speak with council member Vega. Uh, she said yes. So, um, everybody mentioned, are you willing to serve on the Slate Committee? Okay, uh, council member Robertson?
So the charge of the Slate Committee is to put the word out to council members who meet the minimum requires in the bylaws required to serve as an officer, uh, determine interest, uh, and, and, uh, put together a slate, if possible, for adoption by this body. So we should, we should have names out to you. I don't have to read the bylaws. It's been a while. Either a week or two weeks in advance of the meeting, so you all have time to consider the slate, uh, and then you'll vote on that. Or not. So there's a whole process involved. It's complicated. We'll, we'll explain it. More to come.
Okay, so, um, at this point, are you basically asking whoever that is interested to communicate to you, oh, with you? Okay.
We'll put the word out, but heads up, I'm going to put the word out. If you have any, if you believe you have any interest in serving on the Executive Committee, um, start thinking about it, take a look at the bylaws, see if you qualify. I will do the same and we'll be in touch.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh, moving on to item number 6.1, and that will be Altadena Library. And, uh, do we have, uh, any representative from the library? Item number 6.2, and that will be the LA County Department of Public Works, N. Rex, Mr. Estrada.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, we have a lot going on in Altadena, so, um, I'll start off with Loma Alta. Uh, we started off our Parks After Dark program. Uh, it was a great success. Uh, we had probably over, well over 200, about 250 that were in attendance of the event. Um, it was basically a mixture of actually two events. It was our Parks After Dark program and the kickoff of our program called Our Spot. Um, and I don't know if you recall, last time I was here, I mentioned it was a teen program that the county was bringing up, and it's kind of like a safe space for the kids to come and be in the teen room that they've, uh, upgraded. Uh, they have new equipment as far as TVs and couches and entertainment equipment for the kids. And so we probably had over 60 teens that came to this program on last Thursday. And it was a great, great program that was supported not just by the North Agency, but all across LA County. It was a great team effort. Uh, so we gave away backpacks to kids that were participating. We also gave away charge, portable chargers and water bottles, the, and, um, reusable water bottles, I should say. And we also gave them sunglasses. Um, the, the teens were very appreciative of it because it's now kind of like a, a hallmark for the teens, so they can come up there, be part of the program. Uh, we already had a teen program, but this is kind of a little bit more of an emphasis on getting it more year-round than just kind of like time to time. Um, so it's going on right now. During, actually, they're having activities tonight, uh, and then they'll be doing field trips next week and doing guest speakers and things like that. Parks After Dark, we gave away free food. We had The Habit, and we also had free tacos for the community. The pool is also open, so it's open for the community to swim during Parks After Dark. We also had free activities for the community to come out and enjoy. The gym is open, so the programs go, it usually goes about till 9:30, and then everything's pretty closed up at 10:00. Um, so again, that is going to be going on until August 3rd. Um, just real quick, to spotlight some of the things that we do have coming up. We have our, um, Fitness Challenge on June 21st. We have our Juneteenth Celebration on June 29th. We have our Family Olympics on July 12th, and then we have our Resource Fair and Concert on July 18th. We also do family tennis, um, and that's provided free by Veronica Batten on Thursday nights. We also have adult volleyball and bike safety on Friday, and we have a cooking class. And then on Saturdays, we do, uh, we do urban ballroom dancing and youth basketball, um, and also a walking club. So we do have a lot that's coming up. We have more that's coming up in July, but I'll mention that at our next meeting. Uh, but those are the main points that we have coming up for the Loma Alta Parks After Dark. Um, we have our summer camps. Um, we have three in the area, so we have Loma Alta. It's Monday through Friday, and the fee is $100 per week, um, and it's 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and it goes until August 16th. So they have started already. They have a field trip tomorrow, and it's a great program. They're doing the STEAM program for the kids, and that started actually on Monday. So we have a student professional worker that's come out from, he's a graduate student that goes to APU, and he's working with the program. So it's a great addition that we have. We also have the Farnsworth Park Summer Camp, and that started this week, and that ends on August 9th. That's again, Monday through Friday. And that's $70, $75 a, a week, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then our other field trip, I'm sorry, our other summer camp is Charles White Park, and it's the same. They go, just like Loma Alta, 7:00 to 6:00 PM. Theirs is $40 per week, and they do pretty much the same field trips that Loma Alta does, since they're like the sister park of Loma Alta. And they also go swimming at Loma Alta Park. Um, we have a lot of these, I mean, we're pretty much filling up, so that's a good thing. Um, I know Farnsworth Park is getting close to filling up, and also Loma Alta is also pretty close as well. So if you're interested or know people or want to spread the word, let them know. Um, also a little update about the two tennis, um, courts. Um, Farnsworth Park, the project is going to start, I can officially say, on July 15th, um, the renovation on the tennis court. So the, we will be sending out information about that, um, throughout the community, so that way the community can be aware that the Farnsworth Park tennis courts will be, um, worked on. They'll be doing the, the fences, and also they will be working on the lighting and the courts themselves. Um, at Loma Alta Park, the tennis courts are in great shape, and we have Veronica Batten, who is doing her summer program. And I did tell her I would mention her... who is doing her summer program, and I did tell her I would mention her program. So it is Monday through Friday, and she does start at 9:00 AM, and it goes to 4:00 PM, and it's from now until August 2nd. So she does a variety of activities with the kids outside of doing tennis drills and training and instruction. And if you want, you can look at her website, it's Badon Tennis, B-A-D-O-N, tennis.com, and she has all of her pricing on there. And we still are doing pickleball Monday through Saturday, with the exception of Friday, at Farnsworth Park. So the dates and times, I'm sorry, the times vary, but we have it at the park if you would like to attend. And then we have our summer concert series starting the first week of July. Any questions?
Councilmember Knapp?
Just a quick question regarding pickleball. I saw emails from Lynn Raven regarding the missing paddles that were part of the original paddles that she purchased. How are we going about replacing those?
She didn't mention it to me, but I will follow up with her tomorrow.
Okay.
And I will talk to her about that.
Okay. So she had sent an email out that several of the paddles had gone missing, she gave the members a time to return them in case they went home accidentally, and I think she sent another email out that some of them have been returned, but some seem to have been permanently missing.
Okay.
So if there's the opportunity to replace those without her having to go out of pocket, that would be great.
I will talk to her tomorrow about that.
Councilmember Marcusson?
Yeah, I just had a quick comment that, I know in our, years ago, many of us don't remember, we did a parks assessment, right, for the, with the county, and I, I really just wanted to say that some of the things that you're mentioning tonight, the improved teen center, the, you know, some of the other programs are, were asked for through that parks assessment, and so you ought to get credit for, the county ought to get credit for doing some of these things ahead of, I can't remember who our parks person is for the, no, oh, oh.
Councilmember Shida.
Sorry. The, yeah, but, but he's doing, they've done some of it, so that's really great.
Yeah, and they, they have a lot that's already been ordered up there, so if you guys are ever having the chance to get up there and check it out, it's, it's a work in progress, but by August, we should have all the items up there for the kids.
Yeah. I think that's really important, and we need to get the word out, so.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Hi. Warren Skidmore from 30-Meter Telescopes and I were chatting, and we were wondering if we could do astronomy outreach in Farnsworth Park. It would have to be probably week, either the 7th, 8th, or 9th of July, or later on in the month where you don't have a bright moon. We could get a fair amount of telescopes up, up there. You'd have to be able to turn off some of the lights, some areas of the park, because it doesn't work with the bright baseball lights. But we can, but we're both interested in doing something there, and we have a lot of friends, we could have a lot of good astronomy folks there for people.
That's something we could do. I'll get in touch with you about it.
Yeah, great.
So that way we can work on that, especially with getting the lights turned off, because we can just, shouldn't be too much of a problem.
Any further questions for Mr. Estrada? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Cauliflower?
I just have a couple of very brief announcements. We will be having a business mixer in August, so be on the lookout, those details will be forthcoming. Secondly, on September 5th, right here at the community center, in conjunction with the American Red Cross, we will be hosting a blood drive. I've got some flyers on the back piano. You can go online, make your appointment, get in and out of here in a reasonable, reasonable amount of time. Certainly a worthwhile cause, and I encourage everybody to take advantage of that.
What's the date of the blood?
September 5th, 9:30 to 3:30. And again, you can go online and, and make an appointment, so. And then lastly, and this might seem a little bit early, but we're, we're not far from starting our annual process to select the Altadena Citizen of the Year and Business of the Year. So, start giving that a little bit of thought. There's many people in the community that are deserving and, and worthy of a nomination, so I encourage everybody to participate in that process. And again, that, those details will be coming out in not too long, so. Unless anybody has any other questions, that's all.
Councilmember Knapp?
It's the question I ask regularly. Any news on who is the owner of the property where Amy's Patio Cafe is and/or what's going in there? I heard it rumored that a pizza place was going in there, but I, and I saw construction, and I saw the butcher paper go up, but I've not seen anything else.
I wish I had an answer for you. I do not know.
Okay.
I do not know. I will see if I can do a little digging, but I don't, I don't know. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. General public comment, I turn it over to the Vice Chair, Councilmember Sutherland.
We have one. Sandra Fettis.
I was here last month, and I'm here again on a different issue. Since August of 2017, I have had a safety and health issue with another neighbor who engages in illegal burning behind her garage. Initially, she used a large metal tub filled with dirt for burning. Now she uses a portable fire pit with about four or five tiki torches in the, around in the area, which are within about 10 or 15 feet of my studio. She typically burns weeds, twigs, roots, other combustible debris. The area around the fire pit is cluttered with flammable material, including rubbish, flimsy reed, fencing, tarps, plants, and other, and a patio umbrella, actually. She burns on average two to four times a week. I try to divert the smoke using large fans, however, twice I've had to call the fire department for heavy smoke and toxic fumes in my backyard and house. A week ago, I was awakened at 1:30 AM with a smell of smoke in my bedroom. The fire department directed her to remove all weeds and debris from around the fire pit, and they told her to only use firewood, only use, and only use a fire to cook food and keep warm. And this may be coming out of the code, I'm not, the fire code, I'm not sure, but he was emphatic about that. Anyway, my attorney in the past has written several letters to resolve the issue, but to no avail. Fire Captain Turner at the Altadena Station was on site for one of the service calls, and I have remained in contact with him regarding this issue. He has suggested, he even suggested at one point that I might consider contacting the Adult Protective Services, which I have not done. I don't want to do that, actually. I am my mother's caregiver, she's 95 years old, and is most vulnerable to smoke. As you know, smoke from fire contains particulates, which is harmful to your health. I'm concerned about the air quality in our neighborhood and the impact on my mother's health and the safety of our home. I did it! Perfect! I planned that.
Okay. We're just going to turn it over to the respective census tract representatives, so Councilmember Wilkins and Councilmember Lee. Okay. All right. Census tract report 46-10, 30 seconds.
Oh, okay. 30 seconds, quick. Okay. I want to just piggyback on what Jennifer said, thanking everybody for the election. It was a beautiful day, and we had a big turnout, and it was just a fun time. I want to, most of all, thank those who came out to vote, because without the voters, we don't have an election. And so it's really important for me to let them know, thank you for supporting the town council. And also, I wanted to say, there's news about the Walmart, Walmart building on Lincoln, JPL Contractors moving in there. They gave up their lease in Pasadena to move up to Altadena. Yay! And they're redoing the building now, so that's good news. And I also have an announcement, The Seven Day Advantage Church is sponsoring a family movie night, and it's a really good movie, Disney's Ruby Bridges. It's free, and they're serving food, and they'll have a silent auction, and that money goes to the pathfinders who we've seen here in our, do our flag salute. So if we could support them, it's really fun, but that's it. But thank you, thank you, thank you. Census tract 46-10.
All right. You, you, you made it. Okay. At this point, is there any, any other business that we need to entertain? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move. Third.
Okay. Motion moved by Councilmember Marcusson, and seconded by Councilmember Wilkins. Okay, midnight adjourn, and it is 9:04. Thank you all.